Okay, one last task, can everybody hear me? How about now? Okay, so if you can hear me, maybe somebody in the back could give me a signal and I'll do my best to pay attention up there. It's not quite time to call to order, I just want to test this out first, give you a really quick chance. Okay, I told you that'd be quick, uh, call to order, everybody? Welcome to the Vermillion Chamber of Commerce Municipal Electives Candidate Forum. My name is Aaron Knopf and I will be your moderators. I would like to acknowledge that we are gathered on a treaty, on the traditional parochies of indigenous peoples, including treaty number six. On behalf of the Vermillion and District Chamber, I would like to thank Lakeland College for hosting this evening, and of course, the volunteers that put countless hours coordinating tonight's forum. This program will have candidates, will give candidates the opportunity to present their political platforms on issues relating to the municipal government. As your moderator, I will keep a close eye on the content of candidate presentations. Just a reminder, the Chamber of Commerce is a nonpartisan organization that promotes priorities for the success of the business community. Personal or inappropriate comments or questions will not be permitted. We are here to give all candidates the opportunity to express their views on municipal issues. All presentations will receive specified times with a warning signal when the candidate is running close to the end of their time. And with that, I would like to take a moment to familiarize everyone with the rules of order for the forum. These were communicated to the participating candidates prior to this evening. The rules of order for the forum are as follows. No signs may be brought into or posted in the facility attached to any walls, curtains, or doors. The forum was called to order promptly at seven PM and the doors to the room have been closed. Anyone arriving late will be seated between speakers to keep disruptions to a minimum and we will adjourn between nine and nine thirty. Candidates will be introduced in table order. Candidates will have three to five minutes to present their political platform. The format of the presentation is at the discretion of the candidate. The timer will give a twenty second warning and ring a bell at the end of the allotted time. No candidate will be allowed more than their allotted time. The public was invited to submit questions via an anonymous online form. Aiana has gone through to avoid redundancy. Between seven and seven thirty, we will hand out cards and allow you guys to write down questions from the floor in written form. I will read the written questions and address one candidate. To keep equal responses, each question directed at the single candidate can be directed at others at the discretion of the moderator. We will be going through the questions to make sure there's no redundancy. Any questions deemed inappropriate, offensive, derogatory, or that seem to attack the integrity of a candidate will be ruled out of order. Any person who unreasonably attempts to use the question period as a platform for expressing a point of view on any issue will be ruled out of order. Answers to questions will be limited to one minute to maximize the number of questions that can be fielded in the allotted time. The question period will be limited to sixty minutes. Candidates will each have one minute after the question period, after the question period to summarize their platform. The moderator will have final jurisdiction in all matters. Now, a couple of guidelines for attendees. Please be respectful of candidates presenting remarks and fellow community members attending here. If there is excessive cheering from a supporter during candidate's remark, negative commentary is preventing any candidate from speaking, I will restart their clock to allow them their duly allotted one minute. Okay, please welcome me in, or please join me in welcoming the following candidate to the stage. Thank you, not what I meant. Justin Clark, Richard Lavoy, Robert Snow, Kevin Martin, Robert Pulick, Sherry Martin, Kirby Whitlock, Bruce Macduff, Erwin Workington, Paul Conlon, Richard, Yesseko, sorry, and Darla Yorkman. So each candidate will now have three to five minutes to share their opening remarks. Speaking order was determined by draw. This evening, I would like to start by calling upon Justin Clark.
Green light, the green light is on. So hi, everybody, thank you so much for coming out. I'm probably one of the least experienced here and I drew number one, so I'm gonna set the bar nice and high for everybody with this tonight, I'm sure. But I wanted to start off my presentation today with a little bit about me and why I'm running. I was actually approached numerous times since completing my time with the Vermillion Egg Society as president. And I kinda honestly wanted to take a little bit of time to spend time with my wife and kids. But just a couple of weeks ago, we were finishing up the new playground that was being built down by the Alliance Church. I was asked again, and I kinda looked around and I realized that these same people that have been supporting me with all the passions that I've had in this community are actually the same ones that have asked me to run. So I felt compelled to throw my name into the hat, albeit maybe a little last minute. The experiences I bring, I've kinda touched on a little bit already. President of Vermillion Egg Society, I'm active in the Lions Club, former president, I should emphasize, of the Vermillion Egg Society. I look to bring kind of a fresh perspective with what I've lived through in those roles. The Egg Society is a pillar organization within this community. I'm incredibly proud to have been the president of it, but I would take any successes that it's had and put it aside because it's very much the volunteers who have accomplished that. I was just a figurehead in many ways. The other experiences that I bring that may be more unique from me compared to the rest of this table. I've actually moved every two years of my life as a rule. I was born in Devon and I've lived everywhere as far north as the Callowit in Nunavut and as far south as Airdrie. I've done lots of different jobs in between there, working from transitional housing to oil field to my current position within Scotiabank as manager of credit policy for business banking, which is actually based out of Toronto, so I work from home. I might be one of the few people in town that enjoy our new fast internet, I think. So what, my principles around what I wanna adhere to as a potential counselor is it's really its ground into giving back to the community that's really supported my passions, my family, it keeps me very grounded. And I, I just feel like I'm kinda just your approachable dude. I wanna be in public, I do my best to serve in various places and as much as I can. I wanna be successful with this. I measure success by the success of those that are around me, so I wanna be an enabler, I want things to go through smoothly. But I also am prepared for the disagreements, which I'm sure will arise. If I may, I have an ask of the room. I want you guys to pay attention to all of what we have to say. It's up to you to pick the best team for the next four years. I hope that you think that I might be one of those people, but really, you need to make the observations on how we would potentially work together. We don't want conflict and infighting already kinda thing, right? So that's Justin Clark in a nutshell, I don't know who number two is.
Thank you, Justin. Richard Lavoy.
Good evening, before I get started, I would like to firstly thank Lakeland College for providing this facility to hold a debate tonight. I would also like to acknowledge Dr. Alice Wainwright-Stewart for her dedication to Lakeland College and leading the group that she does to run the college, such an important part of Vermillion. Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, fellow running mates, my name is Richard Lavoy and I seek to support on October twentieth for the position of counselor for the town of Vermillion. Where to begin, my platform. Simply put, I'm motivated by the desire to bring back fiscal responsibility to this municipality and make sure our six councillors and mayor, and especially our administration, are all held accountable together. Essentially, my turning point of why I decided to run for council is when I reviewed the annual statements and said to myself, what is happening? Why is our town so deep in debt and what is the driving factors here? Based on my background, I feel I possess the skillset to help council and administration reduce expenses in the budget. Hopefully, if we do this correctly, this will lead to tax freezes. As everyone knows, the role of councillor requires diligence and accountability. I believe the most important role for councillors to complete their research, read their packages before voting, and make sure you ask questions when it is appropriate. My vision includes both the financial stability and community growth. First, I believe the town of Vermillion needs to get its financial house in order over the next term. Second, residential lot development is another pressing need. As there's currently no good lots available to build, unless I'm misinformed, there's really no short-term plan in place. If elected to, I wanna work on a cohesive team, understanding our challenges, reducing expenses, and making sure that we all get along as we do this all together. This is a team, it's not an individual sport. My leadership skills will help in these goals, I look forward to making tough decisions. In fact, I enjoy making tough decisions. Ray Pairs are the cornerstone of each municipality and they have the right to express themselves. From my experience and past experience in council, I will talk with the elders and the ray pairs and ask them what they think Vermillion needs to do before I vote on any matter. I look forward to disagreements between councillors and administration. I find that this is very productive if done right and respectful, and it will lead to strong decision-making from all of us. Somehow, if we appear today, Vermillion is a strong community. It is a safe and a prosperous place to work, raise a family, live and retire in. Let's work together, council, as we get elected into this next four years and make it happen, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Robert Snow.
Green light is also on. Okay, thank you for joining us tonight. I can't express how much I appreciate seeing so many people that are engaged in our community. So I wanna take a moment to thank everyone that's come out and anyone that's watching us as we livestream. As many of you know, my name is Robert Snow, I'm running for mayor in the town of Vermillion. This is really loud. Um, I've lived in Vermillion, if we can just hold on a minute.
Yeah, I don't know how to shut this one off. There is no off button. I do not have an off button.
That sounds better. Okay, I'm gonna start a little bit over if that's alright. As many of you know, my name's Robert Snow, I'm running for the mayor in the town of Vermillion. I've lived in Vermillion for twenty-five years and I've had the privilege of, my beautiful wife and me have raised our son here and he's now here in our town with his wife. And during our twenty-five years, we've been volunteering for many different events and organizations. We've put ourselves into the community as much as we could. It's not because we wanted to just be involved and show ourselves there, it's not because, because we think that's just something you have to do, it's because Vermillion's our home. During my time here, I've served as a paramedic for, in Vermillion for over twenty years and I've seen many people in our community going through their toughest days and I've gotten to know them personally. And it gives me a real personal connection with the people that I serve and it's built that drive to serve in me. I sat on and sit currently on town council among some of my committee duties. I'm the chair of the Economic Development and I'm also the vice-chair of the Vermillion and District Housing Foundation. During our time on council, we've all had to go through together the challenges of COVID and overcome those challenges. And we've also seen a lot of successes. One proud success that we have as a community is we brought supportive living, supportive living, uh, house level four, sorry, into our lodge. Additionally, I'm CEO with Focus Society for Support Services. The programs we provide are a big part of our community. We provide local transit services, medical transit services, and we help people with disabilities be included into our community. I bring all this up because these experiences have given me a clear understanding of our successes as a community and the areas that we still have to work on. More importantly, what it's shown me is that our town and each one of us thrive when we work together, when we respect each other and we get in there and do the work. And I appreciate everyone that does work, we've mentioned it tonight about the park that went up and so many people in our community have put into things like the parks, our clubs and different events. As mayor, I'd lead by listening, I think listening is very important. One of the things I've learned as a town councillor is that we can't make decisions without listening to the people we're actually serving. If we just make decisions and we don't listen to you, we're not functioning as a good council and as a good mayor. We need to be transparent in all of our communications. If I'm elected mayor, I'm gonna work closely with our businesses and our residents and I'm gonna inform them and involve them whenever decisions are made that impact them in our community. I believe leadership isn't about sitting behind a desk and it sure as heck isn't about just showing up to get your face seen and to say you've been there. Leadership is about being present, listening to the people and supporting our residents and our local businesses. What I've heard is that our community wants us to be transparent and that's one of my key goals, we need to be more transparent. One of the ways I believe I'm gonna do this is I'm gonna make sure that as a mayor and as council, we offer opportunities for you to come and hear what we have to say, but more importantly, we offer opportunities for us to hear what you have to say. I believe a mayor should be out in the community, I believe a mayor needs to stand up for the community, show up for your needs and speak up as an advocate for you. And that's exactly what I wanna offer. If I'm elected, I'm gonna be approachable and accountable and I'll always be present to represent your needs. So I hope you come out and vote on October twentieth and thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. Kevin Martin.
Okay, more of a face for radio, but I guess let's give her a go. Uh, just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and being online. It's great to see the support for your community and giving that voice back to us to give to you, so. Alright, so good evening, everyone coming out tonight, my name is Kevin Martin and I'm proud to be running for reelection to the town of Vermillion Council. I wanna start off by thanking the Vermillion and District Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum, as well as Lakeland College for taking the interest in hosting it here as well into the future of our town. A little bit of history of myself, born and raised in the lovely Hamlet of Clanald, Alberta. Moved to town here in twenty thirteen and reached out to our Parks and Rec director of the time and became part of the Parks and Rec group there, so it gave interest into the inside of our town. Four years ago, it doesn't seem that long ago, but it's been a whirlwind for sure. And I just wanna say that the town of Vermillion is always a place where people step up for the community, whether it's through our fire department, Ag Society, minor ball, minor hockey, soccer, curling, airport. There's so many community groups that people step up in ways that we don't see every day. Also with our businesses and community members that take the time out to clean our town and beautify it and promote it in every way they can. Like you said, it's crazy to think four years have nearly come and gone from when we were elected. Over the term, focused on listening to our town and what is needed, supporting local business and gaining new business and working with them to choose Vermillion as a place to set up their future. It's also great to see the businesses in our town showing their support for the new businesses coming into town. I feel as a councillor, you have to be accountable to the people and to council, we are only one vote of seven. Looking forward, I wanna see the Vermillion continue to grow in business as well as residential growth. They go hand in hand in our community. Attracting investments and investors to our community will create opportunities for young families and support their services to make this town such a great, great place to live. I also wanna see where our recreation needs are when we look to our future of our town and how we grow with it. As a councillor, I keep doing what I've always done, show up, listen, ask questions, agree to disagree, and make decisions for the people of Vermillion. We can't voice over Zoom, we have to be in front of the decision-makers at government to bring our needs forward. We can't be a seat with no voice. We are all human and can make mistakes and we can learn from them. I'd like to say to our, that our current administration team of the town of Vermillion is probably the best I've seen for the last ten years. It's a hard job and it's a growing job for a team to get set up for your community. Also like to thank all the candidates and the mayors that are attempting to run for this term. It is good luck to see everybody support our community and wanting to step up. Last but not least, I'd like to thank everybody for being here again. Or I'd be honored to have your support on election day together so we can keep Vermillion moving forward. And a final note, I'd like to thank my family, especially my wife Leanne, and the support of my son Aiden as I greatly apologize for the time spent away or the long waits in the co-op grocery store talking to others, so.
Thank you, Kevin. Robert Pulick.
Thank you, moderator. So I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for organizing the all the candidates forum and to the public for attending this event, as well to all the candidates wanting to serve our community on town council. Little bit about myself, my wife and I, Lorraine, have lived in the town of Vermillion for twenty-six years. We raised six children and didn't even hesitate to be very involved supporting school concessions for volleyball, basketball tournaments, participating in our parish's music ministry, leading the Knights of Columbus as a grand knight for a term, as well as coaching outdoor soccer. We love the town of Vermillion and we share the same concerns as everyone else. We want to live in a safe, affordable, prosperous community. I have a Bachelor of Science of Agriculture degree with a major in dairy science. As a professional agrologist, my career path led me to management positions in the dairy processing and confectionery industries in Ontario, and then moved to the Government of Alberta Department of Agriculture Dairy Division. Following completion of the BAMF leadership course, I accepted a senior management position with Alberta Agriculture Regional Advisory Services in Vermillion. I'm currently retired after thirty-five years with the Government of Alberta. I was first elected as a councillor in twenty-ten and have recently completed fifteen consecutive years as a councillor. It has been an honor representing the town of Vermillion on numerous committees over those, over those years, such as Provincial Director of Alberta Municipalities Environment Committee, Provincial Director of the North Saskatchewan Watershed Alliance, Vice Chair of Alberta Hub Regional Economic Development Alliance, Director of Community Futures and ACE Central East. Director of Community Futures and Ace Central East Water Corporation, Chair of Economic Development Vermillion River Alliance, Protective Services and Healthcare Providers Committee, and also provincially certified to participate with assessment review boards. Participating in outside committees, networking with other municipal leaders, provincial leaders, and numerous professional, professionals have broadened my understanding of issues affecting all municipalities and learning novel ideas to overcome municipal issues. Your voice matters. How many of you want lower taxes? I certainly do. How many want improved snow removal? I certainly do. How many want the provincial government to provide more financial support to our community? I do. These challenges create opportunities. So going forward into the next council, if elected as mayor and with support of council, the strategic plan will involve your input to bring your vision and concerns forward. Council will seek feedback from the residents, seniors, students, businesses, and educational institutions on what they see as the town's priorities for the next four years and into the future. A draft plan will develop and only finalize once council receives feedback from the community. The strategic plan going forward needs to reflect your expectations and it to be your plan. Our community is diverse with many businesses from home-based, commercial, aviation, healthcare, retail, and more. We continue to grow. To support our economic and population growth requires receiving provincial grant funding and effectively planning for immediate projects such as expand and increase the size of the north sewer trunk line, open up more land for affordable housing, and upgrade our airport. As mayor and with council support, we will work closely with our MLA, Ministry of Infrastructure, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs, to ensure there's a financial support for our current major projects. Bricks and mortar projects are important. However, it's really important that we continue to support the social needs of our community. On an annual basis, we need to evaluate and enhance where needed all town-driven community services, such as family community support services, the town's senior program, and more. Business attraction retention is important, economic development initiative. With council support, let's explore the development of a virtual and, or a premise-based, one-stop business development organization to assist our diverse business community to access expertise networks from Business Development Bank of Canada, Chamber of Commerce Network.
Twenty seconds.
Community Futures, et cetera. There are many exciting opportunities ahead for the town of Vermillion. Being retired, I have the ability to dedicate time to the mayor's position. Thank you for considering me for mayor.
Thank you, Robert. Sherry Martin.
Hello, everyone. I didn't write a speech tonight. I'm gonna say it from my heart. Thank you all for coming. It's so nice to look out and see family and friends here to support each and every one of us. For those of you that don't know me, I was born and raised at Eylee. I completed my schooling at J.R. Robson, went to college here, and then I left town for ten years as I was a banker and I went through various towns in Alberta. I was an only child, so I came back to look after my aging parents, and with that, met a Martin and got related to quite a few people instantly. Gerald and I settled here for about a year, and then his job took us to Bonneville, and he said to me, "We will be back in ten years." And about to the minute, we were back in Vermillion. We've raised our children, and we plan to retire here. Our children are grown-ups and on their own, and I feel I have the time to meet with people and hear your concerns in the co-op parking lot, at the church, wherever you would like to talk to me. And for those of you who know me, you know you can stop and talk to me at my house or wherever. So, um, that is why I have chose, after several encouraging people in town have asked me to run, I've chose to run, to hear your concerns and to let you know I am willing to take the time to listen, and I am willing to take those concerns to where they need to go, if they need to go to administration or to a council meeting. You have my word. People who know me know I do what I say I'm gonna do. I've been proud to be on parent council. I'm proud to be on the focus board, and I'm proud to be on the chamber. So with that, I have no platform, 'cause I've gotta learn this job. I'm, I'll be honest with you, I have to learn this. But I do promise you my ears and that I will be there for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Kirby Whitlock.
Thank you. Hello and welcome, everyone. My name is Kirby Whitlock, and I'm running for reelection for the town of Vermillion. Uh, thank you all for being here. Your presence shows that you're, that you care deeply about our town. I'm a neighbor, community member, third-generation business owner of Prestigious Home Furnishings, and I also own the Men's Den. I've lived in Vermillion my whole life, and I've had the privilege of working alongside many of you to make our town stronger. Whether it's through volunteering at local events or just helping out where help is needed, being a part of many boards in the town has taught me to be a good leader. I always say you need to get involved to make a difference. I'm running because I believe Vermillion deserves leadership that listens, acts, and always puts people first. If re-elected, I will focus on the airport, the finding residential lot developments, selling more of our residential land for more growth, keep moving forward with our sewer trunk main that will open up growth opportunities for the town, building good, strong relationships with Lakeland College, County Vermillion River, and Ag Society, supporting local businesses, supporting our seniors, ensuring transparency and accountability in every decision made, working hard at retaining our doctors and healthcare workers. These people are what helps make this community great. I've been the Chair of that committee for the last year and a half, and we've welcomed four new doctors to the community. And now we've gotta work on just the retention side of it, which is, it's gonna be, uh, it's exciting to do that, and I wanna keep working with that. Uh, keeping the town fiscally secure and, yeah.
Thank you, Kirby. Bruce Macduff.
Thank you very much, Aaron. I'd like to thank the chamber. I'd like to thank the college, and I'd like to thank all of you. And I'd also like to thank all of these wonderful people who have come out to tell us why we all want to be on the council. The people that you have in front of you are all very good people, all very good candidates, and they care about Vermillion. I'm Bruce Macduff. I came to Vermillion in nineteen seventy-seven for a five-year, uh, term, and I'm still here. I've raised three children. The oldest one is coming fifty. I'm a grandparent of ten children. I ran, uh, two different businesses, worked for two other businesses in town. I own two buildings in town. I have a lot at stake. I wanna see Vermillion continue to grow. I wanna see more business come to town, because every time you have a business come to town, you bring more families, you bring more competition. I think Vermillion has everything a community needs. We have all of the sports. We have all of the service groups, and we have an Ag Society and a college, a museum, a library, all important assets to the town. My main goal and the reason that I finally gave in to all the people that wanted me to run is to bring a little bit of respect back to council so that we can all work together. I think we need to build a better relationship, bring the relationship back with the county. When I was mayor, we had a very good relationship with the county of Vermillion. It has deteriorated somewhat since then. Mostly I'm here because I care as much or more than the rest of the people at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Erwan Warkantin.
Uh, good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. Um, I'm usually known as Jesse's dad, um, and how people have gotten to know me around this town, but, uh, my name is Erwan Warkantin. I'm a married father of two. Uh, aforementioned Jesse is turning six today. So happy birthday, Jesse. Sorry I'm here. But I come onto you with a background in aviation, and after having spent twenty years in aviation, I've set down some roots in this community and I'm currently working as a legal assistant. I'm active with the Rotary Club of Vermillion, the Vermillion River Flying Club. I love having the kids at our airport, uh, from BES and St. J, showing them what we have as an asset at that airport, and also the Airport Advisory Committee. Uh, my wife, as a lawyer, uh, has told me to include, as a disclaimer, all my opinions are my own. I may be just one vote on council, but every vote is a voice for this community. It also comes with a set of ears. And I'll use mine to listen to the voices of our community. I'll work with council to ensure it's a vote for progress, for practical solutions, and for building a stronger town that serves all of us. Our community is blessed with individuals with diverse knowledge who call Vermillion home, who love this community uh, beyond anything that I've seen in my travels around this country. And we need to recognize that us as councillors, we can't know everything. It's impossible. We all have our areas of expertise. And when things fall outside of it, it succumbs upon us to reach out to these experts and other community members who have knowledge and historical understanding of situations, that we reach out to them to come to a practical solution that furthers our community further ahead. And I also understand that, uh, disagreement is, is only natural, uh, within our community. We wanna go one way or another way, but we also have to understand that we, when we get to the table, that, uh, I'm willing to set my, my ego aside and my own preconceived notions of how something should go forward as long as it's for the betterment and the benefit of this town. I've, uh, like I've said, I've moved around a lot, but I've called Vermillion home. And the people here are welcoming. They are, um, some of the kindest individuals I've, I've met across this country. And I want to share that experience with other people who wanna call Vermillion home. We need more homes and spaces, uh, for homes to be built. Uh, whether it be single-family dwellings, apartments, duplexes, whatever fashion it looks like, we need space for this to be built. We also need, uh, space for people to play. We need spaces for, uh, people to, uh, to set up businesses. And all this has to come together, and we need a plan that works cohesively, but also laid out in a sense that are, in a plan that makes sense. So we go from A to B to C in a way that the community can follow along with us. So we don't go, well, we're at D now, but we don't know where A, B, and C went. So my commitment to you is that when we come up with these plans, is that we're listening, and we're working forward for the betterment of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Erwan. Paul Conlon.
Thank you, Aaron. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out to hear us. For those of you who do not know me yet, I guess you haven't been paying attention to our interesting council the last four years. I am Paul Conlon. I have lived in this area for twenty-nine years. After graduating high school at St. Jerome's, possibly to the surprise of my teachers, uh, I went on to get my commercial helicopter pilot license. I then started flying in the summers and working in the oilfield. I started working locally at Rock Solid and then Pentagon Utilities, up to my current job at an electric company based out of Edmonton. I married my wife Alexa here, and we have two young children, mostly well-behaved. Adjacent to that, I joined the Vermillion Fire Department seven years ago and have enjoyed helping our community in times of need. It was there on a fire call that I considered furthering my public service to our town. I threw my name in the race and was elected in twenty-twenty-one as a first-time councillor. That's when I first started getting all my gray hairs from then on. As a new councillor, there was a steep learning curve as to the do's and don'ts of municipal governance. If I could go back and make some changes, I would, having the knowledge I have gained now. But as that can't be done, I only look to the future. A future where our vibrant and new administration now listens to council's requests, gives council sound advice, and only looks out for the town's best interests now and in the future. Knowing that, I want to further the work needed to ensure the growth of our town, starting with our sewer trunk main rebuild. I get asked why I consider this my top priority. Well, the easy response is, without a functioning sewer system, you do not have a town, and that's the smelly truth. Furthermore, with this new administration, I am confident that we will be able to find use of every single tax dollar better. I want to be the voice of fiscal responsibility, just like last term. This last council did its best with the options presented, but I still know that there's more that can be done with a fresh set of eyes and new ideas going over the books. I live here just like you do, so I always invite reasonable cuts when they are presented. Once these two big items are worked through, I want more paving projects completed, should funding and council allow. This includes trails, sidewalks, and there are roads in our community that are still gravel, and that doesn't make our town look good, and no one likes the dust. But importantly, starting with looking into the airport runway condition, whether that be pavement or better pavement maintenance to get us through. I want better consultation with the medevac services, uh, on their concerns, and hearing the voices of our experienced airport business owners and user groups at the airport. With that info, we need to work with our closest partner, the county, on this potential project as well. A medical emergency does not care about borders. It cares about if it can land on a usable runway to help our residents in times of need. I've heard that medevac flights are not always used for emergency flight. This is true. But if the aircraft is used just like an ambulance in certain cases, that saves the ambulances in our community having to go out of town for hours on end. Being on the fire department, there has been too many times I'm on a medical call and have been told ambulance is still forty-five minutes away as it's coming from Wainwright, Lloydminster, Elg Point, or further, because our ambulances are going to Edmonton on other calls. That is not something I want for our community, and I want to have the best medical services to offer our residents. Lastly, this past term, a big issue has been communication. I know things have gotten better, but there's always room for improvement. And I want a better relationship with our residents and our local partner, the County Vermillion River. They have been a huge partner in many projects, and I want this to continue, as we will definitely have more costs upcoming in the future, and we need to work together. I want to improve the communication between council and its residents, starting with a better online platform for meetings to be viewed easily for those who are unable to come in person. These are just a few ideas for a better communication, and I know our new council will bring forward more collaboratively. This new council together will be your voice. Let me be yours.
Thank you, Paul. Richard Yaseko.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to thank those who have put on this event tonight, too. The Lakeland College and, uh, the chamber. Unfortunately, I was also missing a baseball game, but that's, that's fine. Priorities, right? Anyways, I'll let the, tell you who I am first of all. Some of you might not know who I am. But yeah, I was actually born in Vermillion, uh, but I was raised on a farm, uh, east of Durwance and north of Clondongles, so that's where I spent all my years on, on the farm till seventeen before I moved away to Fort Mac. But, uh, Vermillion has always been our trading place, and we used to always come shopping here. Auction mark days was, was a highlight for us. Uh, we used to have some dairy cattle, so selling cream when we had the creamery here in town, uh, the bake shop downtown. So I had always fond memories, and even having picnics down at the Vermillion River. So Vermillion has always had a, a place in my heart. Anyways, after I got married in nineteen eighty-three, uh, my wife and I, we moved here for one year. Well, one year is forty-two years later. Well, one year is 42 years later, and we have raised four daughters here, and one actually still lives in town here, married a nice fellow here from Vermilion, and we have two grandchildren here. So why am I even trying to run for council? I spent 17 years on council, and some people have asked me, why don't you run? Why don't you run again? And I guess like sometimes, I've done 17 years. Must be, you know, a time limit, some, I don't know, maybe probation, I don't know. But anyways, talking with various people, I decided, okay, I am, I've got less excuses now because I am semi-retired, trying to retire, and so I have more time to do things, and many have encouraged me. Yeah, it's a little tough here because I do know Rob Snowvery, and he's a dear friend of mine, and I tried to, yeah. Anyways, it was tough when I told Rob I am running for council, unfortunately, I'll be running for mayor, and it's just a lot of people have asked me, and it's, I struggled with it for a couple months, and so anyways, I, yeah, so anyways, I had my journeyman, actually got my journeyman carpenter's ticket here, attending Lakeland College, and while I was here, I was distracted because I remember working on these walls, on the concrete you guys were sitting in. It's all safe, there was a lot of rebar, but I did a lot of concrete work over the years, and I received my journeyman carpenter's ticket here at Lakeland. Anyways, I'm starting to look at Vermilion. I was a little bit disappointed, concerned with some of the things that were happening. I know council went through a difficult time during COVID with a new mayor, and I found it very difficult to understand. I've been on council, and I was young, and I did not know anything Sherry, but thankfully they had the Greg Michauds and the Bruce Mariets that were able to help me along, and when you come on council, you're kind of intimidated, but they were there to help you. So if I'm elected as mayor, you got this promise, anybody who's new, you will not be treated any differently than if you sat on one or two terms. I don't think it's fair, I don't think it was fair how our mayor had to go through a lot of things, but that's another story, and that's another story for another time. But I'd like to have a vision, same thing, to set a path and a plan forward that's workable and doable, not just a big dream, and something that we can afford. Some of these things, like a modest budget, I am, you can ask my wife, I believe in budgets and I believe in tight budgets, so I'm going to want to do that if I'm elected as mayor. I've served in many boards.
20 seconds.
Oh, man, life goes on. Anyways, anyways, I've invested in this community like many people, like Bruce Nutt. I haven't started a business, but many people have invested in this committee. I am invested in this committee, and I don't plan on going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for all of you who came out tonight, the Vermilion Chamber and Lakeland College. My vision for Vermilion is one of thoughtful, sustainable growth where economic opportunities, housing, and infrastructure keep pace with residents' needs while preserving the welcoming, close-knit character that defines who we are. I want to see our businesses thrive, our recreational and culture spaces expand, and residents of all ages feel included, connected, and proud to call Vermilion home. Most of all, I want the decisions we make today to build a strong foundation for the next generation, keeping Vermilion vibrant, resilient, and true to its values. I've lived in Vermilion for 27 years. I'm a mother of three and a grandmother of five, all of whom live here, which makes the future of this community deeply personal for me. I've worked in both education, healthcare, and business, and I currently serve as a school board trustee. I also hold a business admin diploma and have completed a governance course with the University of Calgary. These experiences have strengthened my skills in leadership, budgeting, and decision-making, always guided by compassion and common sense. I decided to run for council because I believe deeply in Vermilion, in our people, our potential, and our sense of community. Now that I have the time and focus to dedicate to public service, I want to give back to the town that has given me so much. Good governance, oh, sorry. Good governance begins with listening, empathy, and accountability. Even every voice matters, and I want residents to always feel heard, respected, and represented at the council table. Healthcare is a passion of mine, not only because I worked in this field, but because I've lived through the challenges it presents. A year and a half ago, I was in a serious car accident that required a long recovery. That experience taught me resilience, patience, and gratitude, and reminded me of the incredible strength of this community in difficult times. Today, I stand stronger than ever with a renewed sense of purpose and perspective, ready to serve Vermilion and help ensure every resident has access to the care and support they need. I'm seeking to continue as a school board trustee while also serving as a councillor because I understand how deeply education and community planning are connected. Decisions about schools, housing, and services affect families, businesses, and our town's growth. Alberta law allows me to serve in both roles. I believe the dual service will help bridge communication between schools, council, and residents so we can plan wisely for all generations. If elected, I will focus on the areas that make Vermilion strong today and sustainable for tomorrow, starting with careful financial planning. We need to ensure our town remains stable, prepared for future challenges, and able to maintain the quality of life that we value. I support proactive investment, planning, and saving for infrastructure increases. I also want to see continued economic development, supporting local businesses, encouraging entrepreneurship, and attracting new industries and opportunities. We must continue to support key community assets such Lakeland College and the Vermilion Airport, which play essential roles in our economy, education, and regional connectivity. The airport supports agriculture, emergency services, and local industry. There is so much more to Vermilion that I couldn't mention everything. I will advocate for responsible development, maintaining and improving our roads and sidewalks, and supporting affordable and diverse housing options for families, seniors, and newcomers. I want to expand programs that keep seniors safe and connected and ensure that youth and families have access to the recreational, education, and community spaces that help them thrive. My focus will always be on planning wisely, spending responsibly, and saving strategically because Vermilion's strength tomorrow depends on the choices we make today. As a councillor, I will bring honesty, transparency, and collaboration to every decision. I will listen first, communicate openly, and make choices guided by fairness, integrity, and fiscal responsibility. Progress doesn't come from division, it comes from working together. This community is more than just where I live.
20 seconds.
It's where my children grew up, where my grandchildren are growing, and where my heart truly belongs. Vermilion has a proud past, a strong present, and an incredible future ahead. Together, we can make decisions that honor our history, strengthen our families, and build opportunities for the next generation. I'm ready to listen, ready to work, and ready to serve.
Thank you.
With your support, we can keep Vermilion vibrant, resilient, and true to its values, not just today but for the decades to come. October 14th, 20th, I respectfully ask for you to vote for and trust me. Thank you.
Okay, so if anybody has questions that they filled out, if they want to filter to this side, we'll have somebody come pick it up. Kealan Snellgrove was not available to attend, so he did ask me to read a brief statement on his behalf. I would like to thank the Chamber for inviting me to this forum and for all their work in organizing it. I believe it's important for the community here directly from the candidates, and I sincerely apologize for my absence tonight. I would have liked to participate, but unfortunately, I had a prior commitment. Long before I considered running for town council, I was elected by Alberta's smaller and rural credit unions to represent them at Alberta Central. Alberta Central has board meetings scheduled for both tonight and tomorrow in Calgary, and I feel a strong responsibility to fulfill the role I was elected for. For that reason, I am currently in Calgary during this forum. I will be back in Vermilion on Friday and will be in and around town until the election. I hope to have the opportunity to speak with as many of you as possible. Thank you, and best of luck to all candidates.
So I'm just going to take a quick couple-minute break because I do want to get the questions that came down from you guys and make sure that they're all ready.
So thank you for taking times, those of you that filled out the cards. We have added a few of them to the pile that were different than what we kind of already had to ask. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Candidates may choose not to respond, but they cannot save the time for later. So again, one-minute responses, and to keep this moving along, we will ask you to cease at exactly one minute. No, no. Sorry, I lost my order here. Just bear with me. Justin. Regulatory complexity remains a major concern for small and medium-sized enterprises. How will you commit to simplifying municipal regulations and streamlining approval processes to reduce unnecessary burdens on local businesses?
A lot of big words in that question. That's impressive. I'll do my best to answer it. I believe that my experience with my professional life will help me talk simply. For those who were my former customer base, I've had a good reputation of being able to explain complicated bank terms and conditions and collateral requirements fairly plainly and in a manner that they can understand and even repeat back to me in some cases. So I do think I have the capability to do this. I will admit at this time that I don't necessarily have those knowledges as I haven't had the experience in this yet. I do consider myself a fairly adaptable person, so I don't think this will be a challenge. I'm more than willing to rise to the occasion, but like I say, it's taking complicated things and making it simple. That's something I'm good at.
Thank you. Richard Lavoy, same question. Regulatory complexity remains a major concern for small and medium-sized enterprises. How will you commit to simplifying municipal regulations and streamlining approval processes to reduce unnecessary burdens on local businesses?
Okay, the key to that answer lies in working with your administration. Administration is geared towards building regulations, permits, et cetera. Our job is to streamline it, our job is to push it forward, ask questions. Don't create roadblocks and make sure that if they make sense, make it happen. So working with administration on all building permits is a vital part of making things happen. Thank you.
Robert Snow. Investment attraction requires infrastructure readiness and available industrial land. What steps will you take to ensure our municipality remains competitive in offering well-serviced industrial and commercial development opportunities?
Thank you for the question. It's important, I think, as elected officials that we remember we're not the specialists in these fields, and one of my campaign messages has always been that we need to solicit feedback from our realtors, our developers, our builders in the community, and we need to be talking to our business owners to see what kind of development and what kind of growth we need to actually attract and look at to make sure that our community is successful. It's easy for us to sit back in economic development and as a town to say, this is what's best for the town, and this is what we think, but the reality is, is we need feedback from the people that actually know where the growth is, and we also need to advocate to our province to ensure that when we do this growth, they put in the funds that they need to put in to help us get to the state we want in growth.
Thank you, Robert. Kevin Martin. Predictability and fairness in taxation are essential for business growth and planning. Sorry, let me start that again. Predictability and fairness in taxation are essential for business growth and planning. What measures will you take to ensure municipal tax structures, levies, and fees remain competitive, transparent, and stable over the long term?
Thank you for the question. For this to happen, we have to work with administration to reach out to the communities around us and to our business owners in town to see what their needs are met and achieved and what growth we need in that aspect. Sometimes we might get waylaid with chasing the dream when the dream is still yet to be determined, so I think just working with administration and the business community to know what is needed at that time.
Thank you, Kevin. Robert Puellick. Invested traction requires infrastructure readiness and available industrial land. What steps will you take to ensure our municipality remains competitive in offering well-serviced industrial and commercial developed opportunities?
Yeah, that's a loaded question, and thanks for the question. Certainly, it's important to, as far as promoting the town of Vermilion, we need to ensure that our information packages available for site selectors to promote our community and provide them with the necessary data in order for them to make an informed decision as to where to build, especially in our industrial and retail area. And included in that is ensuring that our municipal development plan is clearly dusted off, reviewed, and discussed with council and administration and all the stakeholders in our community to ensure that we place the right businesses in the right location and provide the right kind of services that the different businesses require. For example, there's great interest in our community to have drone technology come here, and we need to understand what their needs are in order to position themselves in our
Thank you, Robert. Sorry, the technology is fighting with me here a little bit. Sherry Martin. Predictability and fairness in taxation are essential for business growth and planning. What measure will you take to ensure municipal tax structures, levies, and fees remain competitive, transparent, and stable over the long term?
Thank you for the question.
Thank you for the question. And like I said earlier, folks, I have to learn this role. I will reach out to my fellow councilpeople to get the information I know to make a proper decision that is going to be fair for everyone.
Thank you. Kirby Whitlock. Local procurement keeps dollars circulating within our communities. How will you advance, how will you advocate for procurement policies that balance fiscal responsibilities with support for Alberta-based businesses and suppliers?
I would work with our administration on that. And then being a business owner too, I can relate to them what's happening and how we can work with other businesses better and do, yeah, experience or look into things like that.
Thank you. Bruce Macduff. Same question. Local procurement keeps dollars circulating within our communities. How will you advocate for procurement policies that balance fiscal responsibilities with support for Alberta-based businesses and suppliers?
We have an economic development committee and people who are supposed to be out there asking businesses to come to Vermillion. With technology today, you can work from here and have your product or services go around the province, the country. One way we can help bring business to town is through an organization that we set up called the Community Development Co-op. And several local businessmen put money into it and built a building for the cheese re to move to town. I think it was a great addition to the community, and if we keep looking forward like that, we can make it work.
Thank you. Erwin. Housing affordability remains a growing challenge for workers and families. How will you work to expand affordable housing options and support developments that meet the evolving needs of the workforce?
First thing, I would actually have a look at the, there was a gap study that was done recently, and have a look at that and see what is usable right away. Try to implement that. I actually, as a kid, grew up in supportive housing or supportive-style housing. I understand, somewhat from a kid's perspective, that the importance of having a roof over your head. So we need to look at what are we missing within our community, then reach out to our realtors, developers and other interested parties to see exactly what we need so everybody has a home.
Thank you. Paul Conlon, same question. Housing affordability remains a growing challenge for workers and families. How will you work to expand affordable housing options and support developments that meet the evolving needs of the workforce?
Well, first, we need some more land to build these homes. We currently have eight more coming in Brennan, but the next plan for our next council will be to look at a development in our community that is not a massive cost like some previous developments. There'll be a council decision, administrative decision, that we have to work on a strategic plan going forward, how we will get shovel-ready land for building development and inside of that can be attainable housing and such.
Okay, thank you. Richard Jusseco. Investment attraction requires infrastructure readiness and available industrial land. What steps will you take to ensure our municipality remains competitive in offering well-serviced industrial and commercial development opportunities?
Okay, so I guess as a community, we have to look if there is any gaps that are there and any businesses coming into town. As they look around, they'll still tell us what kind of gaps there is and just be able to work with business and, yeah, just to make things easier. So I think if we have the infrastructure in there and find out what is the biggest hindrance for them not to set up in Vermillion, and we always are competing with other municipalities, so to make sure that we are able to compete with other municipalities as far as taxes and everything else, so that's how I'd look at it.
Thank you. Darla. Safe, well-served communities are central to economic prosperity. What investments in public safety, transportation and core infrastructure will you prioritize to support community and business vitality?
So what I would do first and foremost is learn what is happening, what we need, what we don't need. Our fiscal responsibility is a huge part of that. We have to make sure that what we do fits into our plan and into our spending. So I think that priorities are interesting because it can be one thing or the other, but you have to sit down as a team and a good working team and ask the community, what do they need to do or what do we need to do to help them? I think getting together with community members, maybe bringing them into a discussion about certain things that they know more about or have the vested interest in. We have to keep our businesses thriving, but also look after the infrastructure and the roads and the grounds and everything else to make people want to be here.
Perfect. I didn't warn any about this ahead of time, but we are going to go reverse order back. So the people that answered first last time will get to answer second this time for similar questions. So Darla. Understanding the impact of taxes and fees is critical to sound policymaking. How will you ensure municipal taxes, levies and fees are regularly assessed for their impact on business competitiveness and growth?
Okay, thank you for the question. I know taxes are a big concern for a lot of people. I get that. For me, it's all about being careful with how we spend. That means making sure we prioritize what really is needed, planning for future projects and finding ways to use our resources efficiently. By doing that, we try to keep tax increases reasonable without cutting services or putting growing at a risk. I also think it's important that residents understand where the money goes. So I would make sure there's open communication about budgets and decisions and definitely have your, you know, we think about everybody that's struggling right now, and I think that's a really huge concern for everybody.
Thank you. Okay. Sorry, Richard. Businesses and taxpayers deserve clear insight into how their dollars are spent. How will you improve the accessibility, clarity and transparency of municipal budget reporting and financial decision-making?
Okay, so as far as I know, those documents are available. I think during the budget process, which will be happening here, I think the residents have to be aware and where the dollars are going to and to get, give feedback to council. Sometimes we have a different way of looking at things, but we need to know what the residents are saying to us and in budgets. Sometimes people think budgets are complicated, and they are. It's just like your budget with a bunch more zeros at the end, and you have to look at and make sure it's not, people don't feel burdened on the taxation side, so that's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm trying to sort questions. Paul. Understanding the impact of taxes and fees is critical to sound policymaking. How will you ensure municipal taxes, levies and fees are regularly assessed for their impact on business competitiveness and growth?
Well, every single year when we go over a budget, every line item is gone through, and we do our best to see what items we require and what items can maybe be cut and such. In the past, we were not always given the best information, and we've already seen in the past six months with our new administration how much better this upcoming budget is going to be. They're going through it very thoroughly, and I look forward to that. And with our new council, we will definitely have a much better budget going forward this year.
Thank you. Erwin. Excuse me. Municipalities are increasingly taking on programs beyond their legislative mandate. How will you ensure our municipality focuses on delivering only those services and initiatives required under the Municipal Government Act rather than duplicating services better delivered by orders of government or private entities?
I would, sorry, I would work directly with our MLA on this. I mean, if it's under the MGA, the Municipal Government Act, and what we are required to deal with, I'd work directly with her, our elected MLA, and then start moving up the chain. If we're not getting much success with him or if he's not getting much success, let's keep pushing that up the hill because we shouldn't be bearing the brunt of programs that we're not mandated to, but also then work with our taxpayers to let them know what's going on because it doesn't work if we're only talking with the MLA of what's going on, but not then talking with our taxpayers as well. So I'd work directly with the government on this.
Thank you. Bruce, same question. Municipalities are increasingly taking on programs beyond their legislative mandate. How will you ensure our municipalities focus on delivering only those services and initiatives required under the Municipal Government Act rather than duplicating services better delivered by orders of government, other orders of government or private entities?
I've already been talking to the MLA on some of these issues. The best way to do it is to find out which services we are duplicating and make sure that we're not involved with them. One that comes to mind is we are responsible for the Vermillion Housing Authority, and the government of Alberta is not paying the grant that they used to pay in lieu of taxes. And I've been working with him to try and get that back so that we can look after that service and provide the dollars that are needed for those facilities. I can't say to him that if there's a fire, we won't react, but if they're not going to pay any taxes to us, it makes it very difficult for the town to provide the services.
Thank you. Kirby. Emerging industries present new opportunities. How will you ensure our municipality actively fosters an environment that welcomes investment in these key sectors?
Good question there. So, well, we have our economic development. We offer the business incentive program. We have the industrial incentive program. We have the Good Life Institute that brings business to town as a driver for that. People look at us and say, yeah, that's a good place to be, Vermillion. And, yeah, just work with administration of that, of that economic development to make sure we keep building a good business. And being in business too kind of drives business and talking to them of what the town's like and how it's evolved and what is a great place to have a business and operate one out of.
Thank you. Sherry, same question. Emerging industries present new opportunities. How will you ensure our municipality actively fosters an environment that welcomes investment in these key sectors?
And again, I would, thanks for the question. Just because I'm new to this, I would still rely on my council members for feedback and to learn this. But I would really support going out and promoting this town with all the positives that this town has. If you read my article in the paper, it said, what do you feel is positive about Vermillion? I said, there's so many, and I honestly do believe that, and I think it is a, we've got lots of potential here.
Thank you. Robert Pulick. Businesses and taxpayers deserve clear insight into how their dollars are spent. How will you improve the accessibility, clarity and transparency of municipal budget reporting and financial decision-making?
Good question. Thank you. Certainly, opening up the discussions in council through committee as a whole and having in finance discussions there with the public in attendance or online, that's going to help going forward with the public gaining understanding of where the money is going. Going forward as mayor, I'll have full accessibility to the public in the office, full-time hours, and they can come to council or come to see me to go through the books. In fact, the public should be seeing what council gets as far as information relating to the budgeting process. And that covers capital, capital reserves, operational reserves.
Ten seconds.
An understanding of the decisions that are made based on the information that's provided to council. Council makes decisions based on the information that's provided to us and the expertise from our finance director.
Thank you, Robert. Kevin. Housing affordability remains a growing challenge for workers and families. How will you work to expand affordable housing options and support developments that meet the evolving needs of the workforce?
Thank you for the question. I look to our community because we have a lot of entrepreneurs and business owners that have dealt with this issue over the years and have seen what it takes to rise to the occasion so that when we go to conventions and have the opportunities to talk to ministers that we can bring that questions to them to get the answers, to have the government work with us to achieve those goals for our community. We can't stand alone. When we go to these conventions, it's more insight to them, gives more insight to us. So if we can collaborate even with the county, city of Lloyd and stuff, it does show an impact to our region, and they look towards you by giving that focus forward.
Thank you. Robert Snow. Businesses and taxpayers deserve clear insight into how their dollars are spent. How will you improve the accessibility, clarity and transparency of municipal budgets, budget reporting and financial decision-making?
Great question. Thank you. What I'm going to say first off is we can't keep doing what we're doing. We hold town halls and information sessions in the middle of the day when everyone's working. We need to be more accessible ourselves as elected officials and more accountable. So transparency means having town hall and meet and greets at an hour that people can attend. So that means if we do it in the middle of the day, we also have to do it in the evening when people are done work and show them why we're raising taxes, why we're keeping the taxes the same, why we have the budgets we have. We have to show transparency by being open about what we're doing and receiving their feedback so we can move on their feedback to make better budgets in the future.
Thank you. Richard. Predictability and fairness in taxation are essential for business growth and planning. What measures will you take to ensure municipal tax structures, levies and fees remain competitive, transparent and stable over the long term? Lavoy, sorry.
Thank you for the question. Taxes are based on filling your budget. When you do your expenses on your budget, you determine your taxes at the end. You need to work with your county. When I was on council in the past, we worked and we created an intermunicipal agreement which helped with a lot of the services, so we didn't have to stand alone to do the service. I really think we can trim this budget. It's gone up substantially since I've been a councillor, and by trimming a budget, then you can work to put stuff for reserves away and freeze your taxes. That's what my goal is. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin. Local procurement keeps dollars circulating within our communities. How will you advocate for procurement policies that balance fiscal responsibilities with support for Alberta-based businesses and suppliers?
So I think that Vermillion really needs to rely on what it does well. We need to make sure our community members that are current are doing well so that they are more welcoming when there are new businesses that arrive in the town. There's, they have to work together to compete essentially, where we make Vermillion a hub of business and productivity and so that we can better compete with the larger areas and and so that we can better compete with the larger areas and bring in those new businesses. So I guess to answer the question, I would want to foster that culture, and make sure that those communications are, are in place.
Thank you. Okay, this one's a little bit, I'm going to read this. What is the rationale, or so I'm going to ask Paul. What is the rationale for improving the airport? What are the statistics of annual airport use, especially for medical versus personnel, personal recreation?
I do not have the numbers in front of me, and I am going, drawing on a blank here for the exact amount, and I do know there's people in the crowd that have those numbers. But any medical emergency is important. And if that's, I believe the number's over forty-four, that's a high number. That's forty-four times that somebody needed a medical service in this community, and I don't think you can put a, a price on that, to be honest. Maintenance of the airport is very important to me, and I hope in the next budget, we can put that in. Of course, there are other factors. We haven't seen this budget yet. But Super Truck Mania is at the top, but the airport is right below that for maintenance, at the very least, because we need to keep this facility open, because once again, you can't put a price on safety.
Sherry, on, do you support keeping the airport open? This was directed at you.
Thank you for the question. I do actually support in keeping the airport open. I work for Alberta Health. I've been there as a unit clerk for thirteen years, and I've seen lots of patients have to go out with that service, as well as my daughter had to be airlifted out once. So, yes, I would support it. I know it is a topic. But my, you've asked for my personal opinion, and I promised you earlier I would give you my feedback. That is my personal opinion.
Darla, same question. Do you support keeping the airport open?
Yes, I do support it. I, since I've been running for this position, I've been talking to a lot of people in town and outside in the county. And I just think that there's so much good about the airport. So many businesses could start here and fly back to Calgary, or fly anywhere they need to go. I think there's some confusion about the airport and, and what the costs are, and why there hasn't been a lot of action, and I've found out a lot, and I'm going to be digging in more. But my personal opinion is we need to have our community safe. And if safety is part of the airport, then I agree a hundred percent. We should look after it. Thank you. Did I make it on time?
You did. Thank you. So I'm going to ask the same question for the three mayor candidates. Robert Peulick. Tell us about a decision you made as a councillor that you wish you had a do-over on.
It's fifteen years of experience as a councillor. I learned you, you may not agree with everybody. You, you agree to disagree in a respectful manner. And the decisions that are made around the table as a council, if council accepts a certain direction, you're obligated to support that, even though you may not be completely on-site, even if you voted against it. So I would say, every decision that I've made, I support the decisions I've made, and I support whatever council has made as far as a decision going forward. And honestly, council as a whole makes those decisions, and I have, I don't regret any decision I make.
Richard Yasenko, same question. Tell us about a decision you made as a councillor that you wish you had a do-over on.
Maybe starting council in the first place? No, seriously, it's, a lot of the decisions are tough. The one that I think was, was a tough one would have been the fiber to our community, because there was things that were said or taken for granted with the government, and the cost to our community was probably more than a lot of us realized. It is a needed infrastructure for our businesses to expand, and, but it was a pretty high price tag for our community to pay. I was, I was part of that in the beginning, and then I heard some of the stuff that happened regarding MSI.
Ten seconds.
Okay, so I'd say that was the biggest one. But I think it was needed.
Thank you. Rob Snow, same question.
Same question. Good. I'm not going to say any decisions that we voted on for council, because once they're voted on, they are councils as a whole. But decisions personally, I, I know there's been a lot of challenges over the last four years about our financial responsibility and fiscal openness. And I know as council, we try to do our best, and sometimes doing your best, you, you kind of take an answer a little bit too soon, and, and you don't dig as much as you should have. And if I had to go back over the last four years, I think I'd dig a little bit more into some of these questions that were brought to us, and not just accept the, the easiest answer. Not that I've done that every time, but it is easy to do that, especially when you're relying on what you feel are the specialists. So I think just being a little bit more thoughtful and determined in some of these concerns that are brought forward.
Thank you. I, I do have a follow-up to the question, and I don't, it's been asked to the group if anybody can answer this one. So I don't know if, if that's something. But does anybody know the statistics for the airport use?
I believe that during COVID, there were seventy-two medevacs taken out of Vermillion in two thousand and twenty-one. I don't know what it was in twenty-two. It was a little lower than that, but there were still a lot.
Go ahead, Rob.
And just to add on to what Bruce had said. You know, during my time as paramedic, I was still a paramedic when COVID started, and absolutely, when COVID came in, our medevac calls went up significantly, which kept our ambulances in town. And I, I think the number is increasingly going up, especially with this new GPS system. I know we can have airplanes land in a lot worse weather with a lot lower ceiling, so I would imagine that number is just going to increase every year.
About a week and a half ago, in one evening, at ten o'clock, I heard it when I was going to bed, someone else told me that it was in again at about two o'clock, and at five o'clock in the morning, it woke me up the next morning. So there were three medevacs in the one evening.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the last question. This again is going to be for mayoral candidates. It is, it is addressed to one person, so I'll start with him. Robert Peulick. Considering all the in-house issues in council over the past four years, how do you plan to bring back teamwork and collaboration and trust back to the council table, and get the trust back for the residents and businesses of Vermillion?
Trust. Well, every councillor at the table has an equal say in, in, in the debate, and every decision or every viewpoint is respected by all around the table. And we can all agree to a disagree, but when we walk out of that chamber, we're all friends.
Okay. Robert Snow. Considering all the in-house issues in council over the past four years, how do you plan to bring back teamwork and collaboration, teamwork and collaboration and trust back to the council table?
Thank you. Trust demands respect. And if we can't respect each other, we can't trust each other. And I think to get the respect, we have to have proper communications. This bickering back and forth, I'll, I'll be very honest. In four years, the first three, I didn't feel like I was serving you people, because we weren't communicating on your behalf. So council needs to stay focused on what's important, and that's our residents. And if we can focus on what's important, our residents, we can communicate with each other, and we can respect each other, and then that's how trust builds.
Thank you. Richard, do you need me to repeat the question?
I think I know what it's, what the question's about.
Thank you.
Yeah, trust, trust, and, yeah. I, I told one of the councillors, and I said this. I said, during this whole process, when, when, what was going on, I wish there would have been more mature adults in the room and, and talked with them. Sometimes we make mistakes, and, and, and MGA and the Code of Conduct was an issue. I know that, because I was served on terms when councillors attacked councillors with Code of Conducts. Had nothing to do. If you don't like a person, you attack them. Fortunately, this is kicked out. And I hope the councillors can sit down as mature adults and, and, and deal with things in a mature way.
Ten seconds.
A lot of things that happened, yeah. It, it wasn't good for our community.
Thank you. Okay, so we are going to go into the summaries. I'm going to go back to my order, which I have moved. Sorry. So we'll have one minute for a summary to summarize. I'm just double-checking on that. It may be two minutes. I don't have the time written down here. Okay, sorry about that. It's two minutes. And we're going to start with... Sorry, I put my sheet down while I was looking at that. Got a few papers here. I apologize. Oh, there we go. Justin.
Kind of, now it's working. All right, so even tonight, I continue to learn about the potential and the challenges of this community. And I so for, look forward to the, the opportunity to continue deepening these, these questions. I want to earn your guys' right to apply my relatable, boots-on-the-ground, common-sense approach to my decision-making. I've invested in this community. I've put a lot of sweat into the, our physical, our grounds, and the, the buildings and everything around us. I have an interest to improve this community with my children, who I plan to raise in this area. And I'll admit that maybe my public speaking skills are growing as we speak here as well. But it's the sign of a, a strong 4-H club around this community that I think that we have some good speakers in this, on this table. But I really would love to, the opportunity to discuss the direction of this town. I am a little bit better one-on-one, and there are other events that are being hosted by councillors, myself included, and I highly encourage you guys to come to them. We usually all show up, and we, we support each other with that, because we are going to be a team in some capacity, to everybody on my left. And so I think getting to know us a little one-on-one, in addition to the questions asked tonight, is your guys' best path to making the right decision. I yield.
Thank you. Thank you, Justin.
Richard Lavoy.
Tess. Based on tonight's dialogue, and when I've been on the campaign trail here the last couple of weeks, the past council has not attained the goals they set for the four years they were council. It appears that the guidance from administration was difficult, and probably a big part of it. So working together at that time, or through the four years, seemed to be broken. It's time to fix it. I think you've got a great group of people running here. So let's vote a new council that is motivated to work for the good of town of Vermillion. And once we focus on fixing rather than just talking about it in social media, it, it'll be a lot better. I'm a realist. I'm a go-getter. I'm a proven leader in everything I've done. I set my own personal goals, and if it's successful, I will set goals for myself as a councillor. Looking back to my previous term on council in two zero zero six to two eleven, I was involved in a lot of decisions, like finished building the regional centre. I co-chaired and designed the construction of our downtown revitalization with Mr. Bruce Marriott. I voted not to close the airport. Isn't that funny? Not to close the airport in my first meeting in two thousand and six, and it's still open today, which is great. I sat on the Water for Life Committee, which brought our water pipeline to Vermillion. And finally, before I resigned, I was instrumental in getting the land deal done for LMG Manufacturing to move the, the tank farm to Vermillion and build a lot of jobs, so quite proud of that. As I reflect back, we did have a lot of disagreements in council, but we debated it, and, but at the end of the day, we got things done, because we got along. If you like a progressive, self-motivated councillor, vote Richard Lavoy on October twenty, twenty twenty-five, and let's all get it done together. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Robert Snow.
Thank you. You know, the biggest role of a mayor is being an advocate for you, for our residents, being an advocate with the province, but also being an advocate to our administration and our town. Over the last four years, that's exactly what I've done. I, I've reached out to just about every minister on your behalf, Minister of Health, Minister of Transportation, Minister of Community Social Services. I've reached out to ensure that they're listening and hearing your voice and what our town needs. I've advocated on your behalf to our town administration. When I hear those tough questions and emails and on Facebook, I take them seriously, and I bring those questions forward to our administration, and I ask them for an answer, so I can bring them back to you. A mayor needs to represent your voice. We hear a lot of, I'm going to be there every day, and I'm going to do this, and I'm going to do that. I'm saying I have done that, and I will continue to do that, because the people of this community are the absolute most important thing for me next to my family. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Kevin Martin.
So, yeah, so as coming, hopefully coming back as a returning councillor, I feel that, yeah, in some ways, we have let you down over the last four years, but by learning what we've learned over four years is what makes me drive to stay on and, and work for you guys, for this community. Give guidance to the new councillors, because definitely there's going to be new councillors, and we have new guidance at administration that will even guide council and our community forward. Looking forward to having open and honest opinions. Every opinion counts, whether it's good or bad. We take it in stride. So I think this is a first for everybody, but we are having different ones that are having kind of meet and greets, because not everybody, we, we've been born and raised in this town, but we don't know everybody. And one day we will, whether it's here or somewhere, so. And I just want to say thanks to everybody for coming out tonight again, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Peulick.
Yes. Going forward, being your mayor, I will be accessible. It's not that I'm going to be sitting in an office. I will be out there to the, out to the public face-to-face on a regular basis. I will be committed to ensuring that our council works together, and we sincerely... And we sincerely come up with a plan to have a successful strategic plan that meets your expectations. We've got a lot of struggles ahead going forward with the sewer trunk line, getting funding from the provincial government. We need provincial government support for our airport. And we need provincial government and outside banking assistance for affordable housing. So we have a few pinch points that I'm willing to advocate to ministers and other federal agencies to help support our community with the funding that we desperately need. So I will be out there full-time, working hard for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Martin.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, you all know who I am, but I don't know who all of you are. And if I get in for council, I welcome you to come up to me anywhere uptown and say hello. Let me know who you are, if you have any concerns. And like I said earlier, I promise to take your concerns where they need to go. I am that type of person that if I say I'm going to do something, I do it. I like to support our town. My husband and I buy most of our stuff here retail-wise. Professionals we deal with and we absolutely love this town, we're not going anywhere. Thank you.
Kirby Whitlock.
Thanks. I'd like your vote on October twentieth and also to be a voice, just not at election time, but every single day I serve. I believe in assessable leadership, that means open communication, honest dialogue, and making sure every voice in our community is heard, not just the loudest ones. So I invite you to join me in the shaping of the future of the town of Vermillion. So vote for, vote for me for a stronger Vermillion. And thanks for everyone being here tonight. And it's been a great term, this last four, and I'm looking forward to doing another four. Because the first four were a learning curve and this next four will be more concentrating on what we can get done. And let's do a, let's have a go-team four years.
Thank you, Kirby. Bruce MacDuff.
If I happen to be elected, I would like to set up policies and procedures with the counselors and with the administration to make sure that we are open and transparent. I would like to see the little pie charts that used to come out with the water bills that didn't involve the whole budget process, just showed you where the money went every time. It's a very good tool and it was simple. And if it caused questions, people came in and asked them. A lot of the people, especially some of my neighbors in my neighborhood, are not prolific with computers and it's difficult for them to find information. I promise to do my very best when I am elected to keep things under control and to make sure that we don't overspend and to make sure that we can get rid of our debt as quickly as possible. I am always around. I will have my number at the, at the town office and if you need to get ahold of me, you can phone me. Please vote for us. I, first, next thing, I would like to see more than fifty percent of the population vote this year.
Thank you.
Erwin Work, Erwin Workantin. Thank you. I aim to be an individual for seeking information relating to the public. Is, one of the questions about airport numbers, that, that actually is a microcosm of what's sometimes going on that happens between administration and the residents. And, and us as council, it is our job to find that information out and get it to you. So using that as an example, when there is an, an information gap getting out to the residents, I would be that individual that would seek that information out through the CAO and to make sure our residents understand what's going on. We are blessed with, with individuals that are very good at reacting to, to emergent situations within our town. But we perform better if we have a plan. And we need plans that are clear, concise and understandable to our average resident. I, I aim to be an individual also that will listen to you more than I would speak. Because I think that is the, the most important part as a counselor is to listen to the residents' concerns before we speak their mind. On October twentieth, I am Sir Erwin Workantin and I hope I earned your vote.
Thank you, Erwin. Paul Conlon.
Well, thank you everyone for showing up. It's the best way to get the information firsthand. If you ever have any more questions, reach out, I'm very available and always ready to listen. I'll always be honest and real with you, as always. In closing, I have a goal of Vermillion united and without the issues of the past dragging us down. I want to move forward and do what I wasn't able to do in the first term. Last term wasn't all great, but there were good parts and I gained a wealth of knowledge from it. It's not stuff they teach you, it's not, it's stuff you have to experience, learn from and move on stronger. I want the residents to have the local pride in our community that I remember growing up. Does anyone remember the old town slogan, solid roots, strong future? That's our core values. And now we have the slogan, new ideas for living. That's the Vermillion I want. Not to forget who we are and how we got here, but to continue to grow, move forward and become stronger. Voting Conlon for council is a vote for communication, collaboration and credibility. I said this last time and I'll say it again. If I can run into a burning building, I can make your voices heard and do what's best for this town. Vermillion, it's one hell of a town.
Thank you, Paul. Richard Yaseko.
Yes. If, if I'm elected as mayor on October twentieth, I want to make a promise to all counselors that you will be treated with respect, that you will have always in the year and hopefully that we as a council can work together. I also would like to, I, I, I'm part of the seniors there, they're teaching me floor curling or whatever. I like to, I told the seniors, I would like to meet four to six times a year at the senior facility and to explain to seniors what is happening. Sometimes for seniors, we, we talk in ways that they cannot understand. Make it simple, get to the point and, and they like that personal touch. It's one thing asking them to come to your office, but it's better to go out there. I think more is gained on the golf course, I think there's a golfing buddy up there, keeps my score. I think there's more stuff that is gained in coffee shops. And when we're directly in contact with, with residents and talking and sharing, just in a casual way and share our concerns. So I think that we can, we can talk to talk, but we need to walk the walk. So if I'm elected as mayor, I'm hoping to walk that walk. So on October twentieth, if you think I'm that person, I'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Darla Yonkman.
I hope to be elected because Vermillion has shaped who I am. It's where I've built a home, a career and a lifelong friendships. If successful, if I'm successful in serving as both a town counselor and a school board trustee, I will be a strong and responsible steward for our community. These roles complement each other, as I mentioned earlier. I bring not only the skills and experience needed for these roles, but also a genuine commitment to listening, understanding and representing the people. I serve. My background in education, healthcare and business has given me valuable insight in how our community functions and thrives. I hold a business diploma and have recently completed a governance course, which has prepared me to make thoughtful, fair and practical decisions, always guided by compassion, common sense and integrity. But more than qualification, what drives me is care, care for our people, our local businesses, our seniors, our youth, our community and our shared future. I want to help ensure Vermillion remains strong, vibrant and full of opportunity for generations to come. Since I decided to run for election of counselor and trustee, I have worked hard to ensure residents know who I am and why I would be a great candidate for both. To me, leadership is about connection, listening, working together and finding solutions that make sense for everyone. I will always be approachable, transparent and collaborative. Because real progress happens when people come together with honesty and respect. I'm ready to serve Vermillion with dedication, integrity and heart. You all took the first step tonight coming out and I'm so glad you did. We really need you to be part of this journey and I, and I know that you will want to be as well. On October fourteenth or twentieth, I humbly ask for your vote and your trust as continuing building a bright, sustainable and welcoming future for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
First off, I would like to thank all of the candidates for participating in this forum. It takes a lot of personal commitment to put your name forward to represent your constituency. Can we all give them a big round of applause? Thank you attendees as well for taking time to become informed and contribute questions. Respectful dialogue and forums like these are critical to healthy democracy. I would also like to thank the Vermillion and District Chamber of Commerce, their volunteers and staff for coordinating this forum for the community. You have an incredible chamber that speaks to the strength of your local business community. For members of the business community here this evening, I encourage you to engage with your Chamber of Commerce. They are a strong voice at the local, provincial and federal level. Please remember to vote on October twentieth. Thank you all. We're adjourned. We went through them back there and sorted through them based on similarities to other questions.